Is now in session and it is 1:30. So everyone, please turn off your cell phones while the meeting's in session. Staff, please read the opening statement.
The zoning board of adjustment of the City of El Paso is not in session for Monday, November 10, 2025. This board is established under Article 211.008 of the Texas Local Government Code and Chapter 2.16 of the El Paso Municipal Code. In appropriate cases and subject to appropriate conditions and safeguards, this board is empowered to make special exceptions or grant variances to the terms of the zoning ordinance that are consistent with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance and in accordance with any applicable rules contained in the ordinance. Your application will be decided only after you had the opportunity to present evidence before the board for its consideration. Other parties interested in your case may also be heard at this time. No consultation among board members has been held in advance regarding your case. This board does not act in an arbitrary manner. You may feel that this application of the zoning ordinance or smart code to your situation will result in hardship to you, but this does not mean that this board has the power to grant you relief unless the facts of your case are such that the board must act on them. You may be sure full consideration will be given to your case, and following this hearing, you will be promptly notified of the board's decision.
Vanessa Rangel, Planning and Inspections?
Jesus Quintanilla with the City Attorney's Office.
Luis Zamora with Planning and Inspections.
Andrew Solom with Planning and Inspections.
Elizabeth Thurman-Bingston with the Board.
Christine Lovridge with the Board.
Heidi Avadish with the Board.
Martha Aguayo with the Board.
Drago Tietres with the Board.
Fabian Uribe with the Board.
Saidi Cohen with the Board.
Jose Belitano with Planning and Inspections.
Alejandra Gonzalez, Planning and Inspections.
Blanca Perez with Planning and Inspections.
Andrew Droll, the Planning and Inspections.
Thank you, everyone. Will everyone who is giving testimony, please stand up and raise your right hand? Everyone who's giving testimony? And please say this. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you so much. You may sit. Thank you. Thank you. Staff, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair. Woman, we do have a few changes on the agenda. Staff is requesting item number 6, PZBA 25-00032 to be deleted. This property is located at 8409 Hartford. Again, to be deleted. Also, staff is requesting item number 8, PZBA 25-00037 to be postponed until the next meeting, and this property is located at 6530 Mohawk Drive. And again, to be postponed until the next meeting. Other than that, no further changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Do I hear a motion to accept the changes to the agenda?
I'm Christine Lovridge with the Board. I move to accept the changes that staff has proposed.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Saidi Cohen, second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say yes. You approve?
Aye.
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 Any oppose? Thank you. It's approved. Thank you. Okay. Does the board have any questions for the staff? No? Okay. 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 So let's go ahead and start. Is the applicant or representative present to respond to comments or questions?
Madam Chair, so right now, we can start with the items. So we just did the changes to the agenda, so now we can go into item one.
Okay.
So item one is board member elections for chair and by-share. So this happens every year during the month of November. We obviously get prepared for next year. So at this time, we're asking on item one, the board decides on who can serve as chair and the by-share for next year. You would like to postpone for the next meeting to take this decision, then that's also an option.
Yes, please, if it's okay with the board, I would like to make a motion to postpone this till our next meeting in December.
Yeah, well, that will have to be on a vote, so you all can...
Okay. All those in favor of postponing?
Oh, you need a second.
And then I'll need a second. Okay.
Heidi, have addition with the Board?
Make a move.
Yes, like to move forward for December's meeting.
Okay.
Saidi Cohen, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Great, thank you. So we're gonna discuss this in December's meeting?
Yes.
Okay?
Then, if I might, so item number two is the adoption of the 2026 zoning board of adjustment meeting schedule. So you should have a copy on your backup on the agenda. So we obviously having working on, again, like typically, we have one meeting scheduled for every month with a possible backup meeting in case something happens, we need to cancel the meeting per the month, the first one, then we can go back to that backup meeting. So we still, obviously, the applicants can go ahead and continue their projects. So obviously, we've checked for the holidays, for everything, and that's the proposed schedule. So we can just have, you know, go through that and get approval.
Okay. And do we have a calendar?
Yeah, it's not part of the backup?
I don't see it.
No.
No, sir.
Can you check the back of one of the pages? I think page four, or not page, sheet four, I think, on the back? Oh, page eight.
Page eight. Oh, yes, sir. Right here.
Okay. So, I mean, maybe not everyone has one, but again, it's one meeting every month. We try to obviously work out the holidays, make sure that we keep those out. So just kinda, just for reference, really, but that's all. This case, in this instance, is for the public to be notified, to know exactly when those meetings happen. So again, this is what we're obviously asking for the board to adopt for next year.
Okay. If I may ask, can you email that to all the board members, please?
Sure, we'll email this to everyone.
Thank you.
So right now, we just kinda need a motion to approve.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Christine Lovridge, I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Moved. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay, item three. So we're gonna go ahead and start with item three, okay? Is the applicant or representative present to respond to questions or comments from the board? Okay?
Yeah, well, we'll have staff present first.
Present first.
And then we'll go to the applicants.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board members. Andrew Solom with Planning and Inspections. Item number three on the agenda is a request for special exception B and special exception K. This aerial map provides an overview of the subject property and its surrounding areas. It's north of Mesa and east of Shadow Mountain Drive. The property is Zoned R3 Residential. This site plan illustrates the layout of the subject property with the structures marked in magenta, and the encroachment areas are highlighted in red as shown on the slide. The accessory structure for the swimming pool equipment, which extends five feet into the required side yard setback for a total encroachment area of 74.51 square feet. Additionally, the applicant is also requesting a special exception to allow to legalize the construction of a home structure which extends 2.14 feet into the required side yard setback for a total encroachment area of 5.59 square feet. Here is the subject property viewed from Golden Springs. This is the existing accessory structure, and it's encroaching 74.51 square feet on the side yard setback. This picture shows the existing home structure that encroaches five feet into the side setback for a total of 5.59 square feet. And this map illustrates nearby non-conforming lots that also contain side encroachments and only two qualify for this special exception B. This property structure encroaches 108 square feet on the side yard setback. And this property also has a structure encroaching 75 square feet in the side yard setback. This aerial photo from 2009 confirms the structure existed more than 15 years ago, which supports the criteria for special exception K. Notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property on October 31st of 2025, and as of today, staff has not received any communication and support or opposition from the public. Staff recommends approval of special exceptions B and K. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for the staff? No questions? Okay. Okay. Is there a... Is the applicant or representative, please respond to comments or questions from the board? Please introduce yourself. Okay, please say your name.
Good afternoon. George Halu with SLI Engineering, representing the Shilohs, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Anybody on the phone, please press star six to unmute yourself if you have any comments or questions? No? Okay. Do I hear a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Luis.
Yeah, if, do we have anyone from the public that may want to speak on this item as well?
No. Okay. Okay, please.
Fabian Uribe, I make a motion to approve these special exception requests.
Thank you. Hear a second?
Christine Lovridge, I second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No? Okay. It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming by. Okay. Number four. Okay. Number four.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Board. Jose Belitano with Planning and Inspections. Item four on the agenda is a request for special exception B, two or more non-conforming lots for the subject property located at 205 Baywood Road. The request is to allow to legalize the encroachment of an existing addition into the required rear yard setback and side yard setback. Here we see the property shown on the aerial image. It is located north of Loop 375 and west of Alameda Avenue. The zoning for the property is R5 Residential. Here we can see the site plan that shows the existing layout of the property with the areas of encroachment highlighted in red as shown in the rear. The applicant is requesting exception B to allow for the modification of the required 18.17-foot rear yard setback and the required northerly five-foot side yard setback. If approved, it would allow for 171.21 square feet of encroachment into the rear yard setback and 40 square feet of encroachment into the side yard setback. Here's a front view of the subject property taken from Baywood Road. Here's a view of the encroachment of the rear yard setback of the existing addition. Portion in yellow will be removed to be out of the rear five-foot easement area. Here's a portion of the same addition that encroaches the side yard setback. This is an image of an encroachment of the southerly side yard setback. This encroachment will be removed to comply with zoning requirements. Aerial photographs indicate there are four other properties in the same block and abutting street that also contain structures located in the rear yard and side yard setbacks. I'll be showing two of these examples. First one is 206 Baywood Road that encroaches the rear and side, and we have 220 Arbor Place that encroaches the rear and side setbacks as shown in red. Notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet on October 31st of the present year, and the planning division has received four phone calls of inquiry, but no communication and support or opposition. And to conclude, staff recommends approval with conditions. First condition is that the overhang encroaching into the rear five-foot utility easement area be removed, and that the existing carport encroaching into the southerly side setback be modified or removed to comply with code requirements. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for the staff? No? Okay. Is there, is the applicant here or representative and would like to address any comments or questions to the board?
I don't know if they're here. They might be online.
Okay. So please come to the, of course, if you're on the phone, please press star six to unmute yourself to address the board. There's no one?
Again, anyone on the phone? You can press the star six to unmute yourself?
No?
Yeah, I guess there's no one.
Okay. May I entertain a motion?
Well, we can have anyone from the public or online to speak on behalf.
Yeah. Is there anybody in public on the phone? No? Okay. May I entertain a motion?
Heidi, have addition with the Board? I make a motion to move forward on the special exception B as per the recommendations.
Okay. All those in favor? Any oppose?
Was there a second on that? I'm sorry. Jesus from Legal.
Oh, a second.
Saidi Cohen, second.
I'm sorry. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay?
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Board. Blanca Perez with Planning and Inspections. Item number five on the agenda is a request for special exception J, carport over a driveway and special exception K in existence 15 years or more. This aerial map shows a property at 3005 Park North and the surrounding area. The property is Zoned R2 Residential. The site plan shows a layout of the property. The existing structures are shown in magenta and the encroachments in red. The applicant is requesting to allow to legalize a 24-by-24-foot carport that encroaches into the front yard setback. For the carport, for this, the carport shall be modified to meet the side setback requirement, and additionally, the home encroaches slightly into the side yard, so the applicant is also requesting a special exception K to allow to legalize that portion. This shows the existing carport elevation, which has a maximum height of 10 feet. This image shows the current condition of the property as viewed from Park North Drive. From this angle, you can see the front encroachment. The carport extends 20.7 feet into the required 25-foot front setback, leaving a 4.3-foot front setback and totaling 411.86 square feet of encroachment. Here, the carport can be seen from the front. Conditionally, the side portion shall be modified to meet the required eight-side setback. The existing home extends 3.6 feet into the side yard setback with a total encroachment of 66.08 square feet. This 2009 aerial photo confirms that the home has existed for more than 15 years, supporting the request under special exception K. Notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet on October 31st, 2025, and the planning division has received, as of now, four calls and support to the request. Staff recommends approval of special exception K, and staff also recommends approval of special exception J with conditions, and the conditions are as follows. The carport shall resemble the main residence in scale and character. The carport shall be modified to comply with the side setback requirement, and the carport shall be modified to comply with a maximum permitted area of 422 square feet in accordance with special exception J criteria. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for staff?
I'm sorry, Elizabeth Thurman for the Board. I have one question. So you said the home is in existent for 15 years, but the carport's not?
No, the carport was barely constructed last year, but that one is under special exception J and the home under special exception K.
Okay. Thank you.
Christine Lovridge with the Board. So since it, in the photos you're showing it, it looked like, so the house overhangs slightly into the setback. If the carport were modified to meet that setback, wouldn't the supporting post there kind of run into the driveway? Like, it looks like if you kind of, even if you modified the carport to meet the setback, you'd... I'm just wondering how that's actually physically possible, if that makes sense?
Yeah, it would be up to the applicant to modify the carport itself, but...
Okay. Yeah, I mean, is there room, right, for that supporting post if you meet? It looks like it's, there's only a few inches there. Would it be just like on that, the first part of the concrete of the driveway? Or like, what would, how does that work? Or...
If I might?
Yeah, I'm not sure how to...
Luis Zamora with Planning and Inspections. So like Ms. Blanca mentioned, that will be up to the applicant, obviously to the engineer to decide how to modify and still make it usable. Obviously, you know, sometimes they do kind of liver, they can have entire support only on one side, and obviously, again, that goes through an engineer, having to know how to do that, how to design it appropriately. So I understand, obviously, like, how you're gonna make sure to have the columns placed so it doesn't, it's not an issue affecting the driveway for the garage, but there are obviously ways, and that's up to the property owner, to the engineer, to design it accordingly to make sure it's still usable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is the applicant or representative here? Please come forward.
Miss Chair, if you can turn on your mic, please.
I'm so sorry, yes. Please come up, come to the podium and state your name, and you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, my name is Mike Lustenow, and I'm the owner of the property. Can I take a moment to pass out? There's a couple of additions to my presentation that I didn't put into the slideshow, but I have copies enough for the board. One is an aerial shot of my home compared to the neighborhood, and another one is a certification from the engineer showing it meets approval.
Okay, please.
Engineering-wise. I have 10 copies. If you can pass them out?
You can start, please.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Chair and panel members, I'm here to respectfully request approval to retain my front yard carport, which was designed and built to professional standards and complements the character and function of our neighborhood. I mentioned some points here that I did have an engineer go through the carport and for safety and for long-term durability, and we didn't find any adverse visual impact, and it blends in seamlessly with the home and the neighborhood view of the street. I would just like to start out with a little bit about the foundation of the property. As far as the carport, the slide kind of came in crooked there, but those are the holes that the columns are placed into, and I put it, the holes are 26 inches deep and also 28 inches for the back posts. There's a picture of the, while it was under construction, I did the work myself with some other friends. The columns that I chose, the options were 10-foot columns or 12-foot columns. I chose the 12-foot because they were a thicker gauge, 11-gauge, which is stronger than the 14-gauge that they also had as an option. Also, the, let's see. There's a picture of all the purlings in place, and the purlings support the roof without sagging. Okay, so all four posts are in the ground there. Okay? I want you to notice that the front has a decorative siding, okay? The one on the side, I just have that to show the difference between if I had not had it decoratively sited or not, but the final product looks like that with decorative siding on the front and side and also around both sides. Okay? There's a picture of the post that's mounted into the ground, and the final completion just from the inside. And I do would like to draw your attention to the certificate from the engineer that shows that it meets the standards of IBC 2021 and ASCE 7-16 structural codes. He recommends the structure for permitting. Okay? I'll talk a little bit about spacing and the neighborhood support. Okay. One of the board members mentioned what would happen about the posts alongside the wall. I was instructed that the...
I'm sorry, the time is up.
Do I? I can't finish? Or may I continue?
Microphone, please.
Sorry. Yes, we have three, our time allotted is three minutes, sir.
Okay.
So, board members, do you have any further questions?
May I ask for another minute or so? Did it at least summarize?
That will be up to the board, to the side.
Okay. Okay, you have two minutes.
Okay.
If the board would like to, Jesus Quintanilla from Legal, if the board would like to vote on whether to extend the time and how much to extend the time, you all could do that by a motion.
Do I hear a motion to extend the time?
Heidi, have addition? Aye, to extend the motion?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Would like to extend the motion to two minutes?
Fabian Uribe, I second that motion.
Okay. All those approved?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Two minutes, sir.
Okay. All right, so, just, I was told I'd have to move the post eight feet over, and so the green post indicates where the post would be, and it would totally block one of the carport entrances. There's a measurement of the eight-foot mark. Okay? Also, those red dots on the driveway indicate where the electrical, electricity goes into the property. I believe it would be a safety hazard if I were to place the post in line with what has been recommended. I also think it's important to note that I've been informed, usually the side setback is set up to where you have five feet of property between the property line and the house. In this case, between the next house next to me, there's actually 32 feet between my property and the, the property just to the north. So I believe that should be ample amount of space in case there's a fire, that it would go ahead and compensate for that. Just an aerial shot of the properties that I'm gonna make a quick comparison to. There's my property in yellow and the ones in red. Notice that the structures are steel posts with corrugated roofs, just like mine. The scale, I've been told that the scale has to be at the lower part of the roof. These are all quite a bit higher. You can see different properties, all with steel poles, corrugated roof, and the scale is higher than the lower part of the roof. Same thing here. The scale on this one as well, and the, the poles are just very close to the rock walls like mine is there. Okay? I know the city of concern is that it must resemble the property. This one's showing that my property is eight inches approximately from the, higher than the roof. Okay? It's not a whole lot of noticeable difference. Okay?
Two minutes.
Thank you. Two minutes are up. Is there someone from the public who would like to answer or make, have any questions regarding this matter? If you are, okay, please come up, come to the podium and state your name, sir. You have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am, and the board. My name is Frank Perry. I'm a neighbor to Mike, and I just wanted to say, one of the things that wasn't mentioned, it was in really poor planning, the geometry of that street is a curvature, and that's the reason that pole, one of the poles, like, like it's been stated, why was it, why wasn't it put from the, from the side of the, the distance that's required? It, it also, we have to see that there's a curvature in that street. It's not a perfectly line perpendicular to any other street and so on. I am familiar, familiar with this, as I am, I'm in the construction business.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other, oh, yes, ma'am. Come to the podium.
I'm Ms. Avoye.
Hi. State your name.
I'm Bridgette Rosson. I'm actually the neighbor, me and my husband, that's right above the property, and actually, Frank is absolutely right. The street curves like this to our property, so I just don't see moving that pole, how he would be able to get the car in his carport. It's like it wouldn't really work. As far as infringement, it doesn't bother us at all, doesn't bother our view. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Rosson. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Jeremy Craker. I'm also a neighbor, just a couple of houses down from Mr. Lustenow, and I can affirm multiple other structures that are very similar in construction to his that are within the neighborhood. I think the, the styling and the construction is consistent, and I've spoken with other neighbors about it, and, and there's no concerns or no issues, especially given the distance between his home and structure and the neighboring home. So, I mean, speaking in support of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please state your name, ma'am.
Dana Mills. We live next door to Mike, and we have seen the addition that he put on the property, and I'm in total support, as is my husband. It is, it, it looks very nice, it's, complements the neighborhood, and we would like to see it, this approved.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, sir, please state your name.
Dr. Rosson. My comments regarding what's going on with this, this building or this established poles is that it's standing up against the wall. I think it's safer being where it's at than putting it over near the garage. You've already made comments about what it would interfere as far as cars getting through anything else. It's very safe the way it was made.
Okay.
Why change it?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Board members, any questions?
Could you put the staff recommendation list back up so that we can see? Because I'd like to pick and choose.
Yes, sir.
Luis Amora with planning inspections. So there's a couple of facts on this. Obviously, the, the structure wasn't permitted. The, the city cannot obviously confirm whether it's structural safe or not until they request the permits and the city reviews. That's one of the things. The second to, can we go back to the site plan, please? One of the issues we, we found for exception J is there's a maximum square footage allowed, and so one of the things that, the only way to go through this exception for a carport, they will have to modify that carport to reduce the square footage in order to comply with exception J, and staff check into that, so that will be accounting for removal of the side portion, so they could be within the square footage of that exception request. So just a couple of those things to, to make sure that we outline.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have, I have a question for staff. What about rainwater runoff? Because it looks like it's right on its property line, and if so, it's gonna rainwater runoff into that.
It, it would be within their property. They have like a four-foot setback between the property line and the structure itself.
But it's right up against the wall, right?
So...
So do they own that property next door?
So as you can see, the property line actually extends a little farther than the rock wall, so it would be still within their, their property line.
Any further comments from the board to the staff? Now, may I entertain a motion?
Elizabeth Thurman-Binkson with the board. I may reapprove with staff recommendations.
Do I hear a second?
Heidi, have addition with the board? I second.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. It's been approved. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Okay?
If we can continue with item seven.
We've been leading item six, correct? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, chair members of the board. Alejandro Gonzalez with planning and inspections. Item number seven on the agenda is a request for special exception B to or more not conforming lots for the subject property located at 1746 Sonnysuka. The request is to permit a proposed carport over a driveway. Here we can see the property highlighted in yellow. The subject property is located east of George Deter Drive. The zoning district for the property is R3A residential. Here's the site plan that depicts the existing layout of the property with the area of encroachment highlighted in red. The covered porch will extend 15 feet into the 25-foot front yard setback, and the applicant is requesting a special exception B to propose, to permit the proposed carport. Highlighting in purple, I'm sorry, the proposed carport will extend, as I mentioned, 15 feet into the 25-foot front setback for a total 300 square feet of area. Highlighting in purple is a canopy that is conditionally to be removed, and in orange, we see the area that has been previously approved by CVA. This is the subject property from, looking out from Sonnysuka Drive. This will be the area where the proposed carport will be, highlighting in red, and that's the side canopy. Aerial photographs indicating that at two other properties on the same block and street that also contain structures located in their front yard setbacks that encroach more than the subject will be encroaching. We have 1747 Sonnysuka Drive and 1749 Sonnysuka Drive. This property also has an special exception for the front and rear encroachments. Notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet on October 29th, 2025, and the planning division has not received communication in support or opposition of the request. Staff recommends approval with the, with conditions of the special request. The conditions being as follow. The carport shall resemble the main resident, residential structure in scale and character, and shall be open on three sides. And number two, the mesh canopy on the side yard will be removed. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madame Chair, if I might, just really quick, just to let the board know that Ms. Gloria Clark, Franco Clark's on, on the, online, so we have another board member also right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Board members, any questions for the staff?
Fabian Uribe, I have a question, I'm sorry. This one's for staff. What items do these people have to meet in order for it to resemble the structure, scale, and character of these carports?
Luis Amora with planning inspections. So on that one, we'll, we can go and kind of check with what the board has done before. We're kind of asking for some cover, covering the, the columns of the carport, checking to the structure, whether it complies with, if there's a slope on the roof, whether the structure will be required to be sloped as well, maybe the material be more in character with the home, the colors, they can go through that. So that's what we're kind of asking. If needed, then staff will, can check at that on a later date, or we can let the board, obviously, decide at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
I also have a question. Elizabeth Thurman-Binkson with the board. Did you say the other two properties in the neighborhood had been approved and are legal properties?
Just one. One of the examples I'm showing, yes. It would be...
So how does it meet?
Excuse me?
Oh, I guess just because they exist at all. How does it meet exemption B?
Yeah, Luis Amora with planning inspections. So exception B, it's about if there's two other properties that are not complying, then the applicant can request obviously something similar to what they have. It doesn't really states whether they had to be permitted or not, in compliance or not, so that, that's up to the board to decide if that's something you would like to obviously go ahead. So obviously, staff did state that obviously one of them was obviously approved by the Senate Board of Adjustment in the, in the past to, to build it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is the applicant or representative here to address any questions from the board? If you are here, please step up to the podium, and you have three minutes to speak. State your name, please.
Eduardo Davila.
Sorry, Davila.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify that it's not, we're not planning to do like a carport, it's just a canopy. For the canopy, we submit the blueprints, and, and I have some pictures, if you don't mind, I can pass you on, on what we're planning to do. And as far as the mesh, I mean, we agree, if we have to remove the, the source, the only sole idea to put the mesh is to, for our dog, because it's too hot in the summer, and it's to provide shade, and I have a picture as well.
Okay, please.
If I might, Luis Amora with planning inspections. I will just remind you all this. Obviously, they will have to go through a permitting. Whatever is shown doesn't mean that's what's gonna, can be, will be built. Obviously, it doesn't mean that it won't be built, just FYI.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
And I'm sorry, it's just one set, it's, it's no different.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry. So, and, and that's, that canopy that I'm, that is shown on pictures is being permitted. We're trying to do the same, I mean, with the, under coat, and the reason why is because that, that part of the front of our property receives all the sunlight, I mean, on the evening, and is, is just to have a shade for, for cars.
Great. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here or on the phone that would like to speak regarding this item? If you are, please press star six. Oh, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I have a question after seeing those pictures. So that structures already been built?
Which one?
The one, the gray carport?
Yeah, that's the one that's...
It already exists.
Yeah. I think it's one they were shown on the presentation.
Heidi, have addition with the board? Can we go back to that photo?
Yes, this one. Oh, it's this one.
That's the one that's approved?
Yes.
Oh, but there's no photo, like...
No. No, I don't have that. It's the, the one that...
The ones that you brought.
Oh, okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's not built in this picture, or it is?
It is, it's highlighted in, in red.
If I might, just to, for clarification, are you asking about the subject property?
No, it's, it's, it's proposed to be built.
Yeah, so the, the subject property hasn't, it hasn't been built yet.
I'm sorry, is this gentleman not the owner of the subject property?
Yes.
Did he not just give us a picture of the property with the carport built?
No, that's the example of the one that was approved.
Oh, so it's not really built at your house. Ah, got it.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
So this is a different house? I'm also confused. Okay. And then, another question, the canopy, when was that installed? The side one? The side yard? Like, I, I know that, that plan is to be removed, when was that installed?
This year.
This year? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, is there anyone here on the phone that would like to speak? If you are, please press star six.
Heidi, have addition with the board? I have a question for staff member. So I believe the recommendation is that the carport resembles the structure and height of the house, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but the gentleman is mentioning that he wants to build a canopy, so that doesn't qualify as what the recommendation of the staff is saying, correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Luis Amora with planning inspection. So yes, so now, it, it is kind of complicated, because obviously, if they're gonna use it for vehicles, then we'll deem it a carport regardless of, you know, even, even if it will be a porch, we can deem it a carport if they're gonna put vehicles in there. Now, we can look into it, taking it out of the context of carport. If it's gonna obviously be just like a, like a porch, a canopy, then obviously, we all can look into that, that way, and decide on, on it as a separate, if it's not a carport. Because I know that the condition is about meeting the, the scale and character, but for us, we're just not sure whether, you know, they're gonna use it as a carport or not. Technically, they... Technically, they can put that driveway anytime after.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
A little. So you're not sure if it's gonna be used for a carport or not?
We cannot be sure.
Can we ask? Are you gonna park your car under there?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We can do the carport.
Can you please come to the microphone, please?
Please state your name.
Eduardo Davila. And yeah, we can do the carport. I was thinking just this, it's just a canopy, just, there's some neighbors that have that, and the sole purpose is just to have the shade for our cars. That's it. But if it's necessary to do the carport, we can do the carport and we can do the same materials as a house.
Thank you.
If I might, we have Ms. Gloria Franco Clark on line.
Gloria?
Okay, this is Gloria Clark from the board. I guess I'm a little confused. Is the request actually for a carport, or are they changing it at this time for a canopy? And again, it still needs to be approved. So I guess my question is actually, what is it gonna be? A carport or a canopy to the, I guess, the architect or whoever is presenting their case?
Okay, please. State your name.
I'm Terry Davila, and I'm the owner of this home as well. So we're just proposing the canopy. The canopy is gonna match the color of the house. There's one right across the street from us, which is the one that's circulating. That one's in gray. Ours is gonna match the color of the house. It's just to provide shade for one of the cars that is outside of our garage. So it hasn't been built. We would like to, you know, put it there so we could provide shade for the cars.
Okay, thank you. So basically, what I understood also from Mr. Samora, that they would still have to go and get it approved from planning. Is that correct, Mr. Samora?
So the construction will require a permit, obviously. Then the city will review for that construction.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So basically, we're talking about a carport with a canopy top?
It's like the gray one that is circulating, exactly like that. And there's a couple others around our neighborhood that we've seen. So it's just a shade. It's not an actual carport. But if it's, I mean, if we need to build a carport in order to have shade...
Yeah, I think we have a difference of definition in the verbiage, and we're getting caught up in canopy versus carport. If you put a car under it, it's a carport. Whether or not you have a canopy top, in my opinion.
Fabian Uribe with the board. So basically, she can define it however she wants to define it, as long as it meets the standard of fitting a car under there, right? So it can be called a carport to meet this request.
Vanessa Rangel for the record. Yes, so the materials being used or the verbiage being used for what is being proposed, the way it's being utilized is carport.
Christine Lover to the board. So it sounds like if we approve with the recommendations of staff, then it would still be subject to the requirements that it be same materials, similar construction, which to me sounds like the canvas probably wouldn't fly. Normally, we require similar roof and poststructure. I mean, it's not super well-defined, but it sounds like that would be what it was. So we would actually have to approve and remove that, that staff recommendation, that it match in character to the house, or at least in certain, to provide for it to be the canopy, right? The canopy sort of carport, but stepped down a bit from what's really being, what the staff has proposed as modifications to the request, correct?
The staff's proposing it have light materials, which we need to be in the home.
But with, but with a canvas top, I mean, this would still be a...
They're gonna have to permit and make sure that they have light materials, right?
I mean, to fact, like, you know, would a, what the owners are proposing, would that, you know, when you go through that filter of must, must meet the home in character, right? Like, what does that end up looking like? Is it actually going to be what the owners are proposing, or is it going to be something more solid, more, you know, a different set of materials?
Heidi with the board. Can we get the recommendations, the slide where it has the recommendations on...
If I might, Luisa Mora with planning inspections. Just as a reminder, the board may decide what you all want it to look like at this time. You don't like the fabric, you can request obviously not to be, to use the fabric and do something else, maybe an opaque material. That will be up to the board. You all have that authority to decide.
Yeah, Christine Lover. So I'm hearing some voices from the board that seem to be okay with the concept of the fabric topper, but I just, I'm wondering that if we just approve exactly this, is that, is that actually the fact of going to require them to meet a higher standard in terms of building materials? Or is that...
So I would say I will put it on the board to decide at this time right now. You comfortable with it? Can I put it there that, you know, it should not obviously constitute the fabric if that's the way the board is leaning towards, just to make sure that it is captured?
But if I'm understanding correctly, there's another neighbor, and we have, there has been approval of that to have the same material, and this was already approved in the past?
Yes, it was approved. I don't have the exact date.
So yeah, so there's more, obviously, in the past, they did approve for one of them. Either, and I'm not sure, I don't have the details, either they approve before they build it, or they approve as to legalize it.
Correct. Thank you.
Current code is that the carport should resemble the main residence structure, correct? Thank you.
And then I guess a follow-up question for the canopy, like, why does it have to be removed?
The side canopy?
Yes, the side canopy.
Yeah, because it's an encroachment into the side setback. They need five feet of separation for any structure, and anything technically with a roof. And even the fabric will be constituted kind of structure. It could be, obviously, go through permitting, but obviously it doesn't meet the setback requirement of five feet away from the property line.
Okay, thank you.
So it will be removed?
So that, one of the conditions is requesting that to be removed in order to obviously make sure they're in compliance.
Fabian Uribe, back to the mesh. For a carport, is there any sort of requirement for the materials? Does it say anything about mesh being allowed or not allowed for a carport use?
So there's nothing specific really that says what can be allowed. It's mostly the use. Again, it obviously is gonna cover vehicles, then we'll deem it a carport.
So then it would be up to the board to decide whether we like the mesh or we would prefer that they use another material?
Yes, so the board has that authority to decide.
Martha Aguayo, it does state that the mesh canopy will be removed.
That's for the side structure.
Yeah.
That's the side one, not the, we're talking about the canopy that would be over the carport.
Oh, okay.
Can we please see another picture of the side canopy, just for clarification?
Any further questions? Have your questions been answered?
Gloria Clark from the board. I'd like to see the original proposal, how the mash was. I was not online at that point. Does she have like a picture, picture besides the drawing?
Oh, well, the ones that were passed out?
If I might, Ms. Clark. So there's no proposal at this time. They don't have any examples.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. They did bring us those photos.
Yeah, those pictures are, I believe, from the adjacent, well, the neighbor, neighbor in properties.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. As long as you guys saw that and you comply with that, or you agree that that's enough.
Board members? Any questions? If there's, go ahead.
No, I'm ready to make the motion.
Okay, please.
So Elizabeth Thurman Binkson with the board. I move that we approve per staff recommendation with the emphasis on, I mean, because there's been one in the neighborhood with a canopy approved, it could have a canopy roof line as long as the, can you do that? As long as the dimension, the slope is correct, but there has to be materials on the structure that are in keeping with the home. So in other words, not just steel poles stuck in the ground. They have to add the addition of materials that would be in keeping with the home, which is the way we've done it in the past, I believe.
What's that? Good? Fabian Uribe, I second that motion, except we haven't covered...
Jesus Quintanilla with Legal. Sorry, I don't know if we took public comment before you all take a motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone here or on the phone that would like to speak regarding this item? If you're on the phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? No? Okay, thank you. May I entertain, would you, may I hear? May I entertain a motion, please, Ms. Liz?
I'd like to move that we approve per staff recommendations with the emphasis on the materials of the home must be used to encase the structure, the metal structure, so that it's more in keeping with the character of the home. And because a mesh top has been used on an adjacent property, we allow that to happen on this one.
Okay, do I hear a second?
As a special...
Fabian Uribe, I second that. And regarding the side setback, would that be a separate motion on the side yard?
No.
No, the side yard setback removal of the canopy is already part of the staff's recommendations.
Oh, I see.
I don't think you'd have to...
Okay. All those in favor, please?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Did Gloria answer? Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Okay, it's been approved. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. And item number eight, we agreed to postpone it. So we're gonna go to item number nine, please.
Good afternoon, chaired members of the board. Jose Beltran with Planning and Inspections. Item number nine on the agenda is a request for a special exception B to our more non-conforming lots for the subject property located at thirty-four sixty-nine East Glen. The request is to permit the encroachment of an existing carport into the required front and side yard setbacks. Here we can see the property as shown on the aerial image. It is located north of Edgmere Boulevard and east of Lee Trevino Drive. Property is zone R four residential. And here is a site plan that shows the existing layout of the property with the areas of encroachment highlighted in red. The applicant is requesting exception B to allow for the encroachment of an existing carport that encroaches into the required twenty-foot front yard setback and required southerly five-foot side yard setback. If approved, it would allow for two hundred and sixty-four point twenty-seven square feet of encroachment of the front yard setback and forty-three point twenty-nine square feet of encroachment of the side yard setback. The structure highlighted in yellow is located in the rear easement area and will be relocated. Here's a front view of the subject property as taken from East Glen Drive. Here we have a view of the front and side encroachment areas. This is a view of the front encroachment. And here we have a side view, or closer view of the side encroachment. Aerial photographs indicate there are four other properties on the same block in the budding street that also contain structures located in the front and side yard setbacks. I'll be showing two of these examples, two of these examples. So we have thirty-four fifty-two wayside that encroaches the front and side. And we have thirty-four eighty-four East Glen that also encroaches the front and side. Notices were mailed to property owners within three hundred feet on October thirty-first of the present year, and the planning division has not received any communication in support or opposition. To conclude, staff recommends approval with conditions. First condition is that the rear structure be moved out of the five-foot easement area, the rear storage structure, as shown on the site plan, and that the carport shall resemble the main home in scale and character. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions to the staff?
Elizabeth Thurman Binkson, again, with the board. Are any of the properties you cited in the neighborhood, have they been legalized?
I think if you can bring up the presentation. So thirty-four fifty-two wayside does not have any permits on record. Thirty-four eighty-four East Glen is registered as legal non-conforming. So it is, has been registered as that. Besides that, those were the only carports that were non-conformant.
Thank you. Board members, any other further questions? No? Okay. Is there anyone here or on the phone that would like to speak regarding this item? If you are on the phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Oh, it's a representative here, I'm sorry. It's a representative here who would like to speak. Please state your name.
My name is Jancielan Kinyonas Alhamzid, and I represent Mr. Jason Reddy for his canopy shade structure, as well.
Okay, are you the homeowner?
No, the homeowner is right behind me.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm the draftsman archetype.
Board members, any questions?
Heidi with the board. Oh, sorry. Heidi with the board, can we pull up again those recommendations, the staff recommendations? So on the last, the second, it doesn't say anything about moving over to meet the side, yes, side rear setback, thank you. It does need to say that, doesn't it? Because it was in one of the photos.
Jose Beltran for the record. So the side encroachment is actually, they're asked to request it as part of exception B, because there are two other non-conforming lots that also encroach the side setback.
When you say non-conforming, they're, they have not been approved or don't have permits on file?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's four in total. I just showed two of those examples.
Okay.
Any further questions from the board?
Fabian Uribe with the board. Can we just see another ground photo of showing how it's, yeah, is there another side setback photo besides that? I think I've seen another one. There you go. And the neighbor has no problem.
Okay.
Anybody from the public ready to speak regarding this item? No? Okay. Board members, do I entertain a motion? Do you want to entertain a motion?
Can I see the staff recommendations one more time?
The staff recommendations?
So Elizabeth Thurman Binkson with the board. I move that we approve the staff recommendations with the addition that extra, oh God, I wish I had written down what I said before, extra... oh God, I wish I had written down what I said before, extra care be given that materials used to that materials will have to be used to enhance the structure so that it's more in keeping with the home. I know, but. Well.
Sorry, Christine Lovridge with the board, is that, how does that differ from what is currently proposed in the staff recommendations for number two?
Well, because they'll have to have the addition of brick.
Additional what? Sorry.
They'll have to add the addition of brick to go with the home, to cover the still structure.
So if I might, Luis Amor and with planning inspections, one thing we can do as, as in the past is to just kind of put there that they can, they will have to cover the columns with brick, at least half of the column with some material like that brick or something like that, which is what the board has done in the past. Now, my only question right now will be to whether the board will be okay with the mesh, the fabric on the top since I know it was an item for discussion previously.
Okay, so that was your motion, Ms. Thurman?
Well, that's what I was getting to is they've got to be more in keeping with the, the home and I think, I think number two's, even though it's probably verbatim what the code says, I think it's too vague. I think we have to take it a step further because it doesn't seem to be working. And we, we keep seeing the same thing over, and I keep saying the same things over and I know you guys are sick of me because I say the same thing, meeting after meeting after meeting, we have to add brick, we have to put a roof on it, we have to, you know. And there are no homes that are legal in that area. So we're starting the precedent in the area if we let it just pass by without any emphasis that it's got to be more in keeping with the home.
Okay. Okay.
I frankly don't see why it has to go outside the five. Maybe that's a question for you, sir. Why does it have to go outside the drive?
So they are requesting that as part of, of exception B, there are two other non-con, two other lots that also encroach the side. So they're requesting that as part of the.
But they're not legal, so.
Right, that's, that's part of the exception is to, there has to be at least two other non-conforming lots in order to, to, for the exception to be approved. But again, that's under the purview of the, of you all.
Gloria Clark with the board, can I see the, the proposal there with the proposed encroachment? Okay, so stop. Okay, so how far is it going into, almost to the edge of the driveway or three quarters?
It's a.
It's hard to see from my.
It's about two and a half feet from the side property line.
Okay, so you're talking about the side, so is that a five or a ten-foot easement there on the sides?
That's a five-foot setback, side setback.
Okay, so you're already encroaching three feet, I guess? Is that what you're proposing?
It's a two and a half foot encroachment.
Two and a half, okay. And so, see, I guess I also had a problem because I know, like, somebody had mentioned also from the board, when it rains, are they gonna put some kind of water protection guards that it doesn't go into the neighbors? Two and a half, you might say that is still enough, but depending, it always seems to travel to the neighbors unless the neighbors have had no problem and, or they have not come and voiced their opinion.
So as part of the, they would still have to get approval for permits, which would involve the installation of, of a gutter system.
Okay.
Heidi, have addition with the board. So what I see here, if we don't oppose or actually go with that it's okay with this side setback. And from what Elizabeth was saying, if, which I believe that that's what we should be doing, is the material should resemble the home. So if that's the case, and they put any type of either rock or brick around it, we're already hitting the fence because that's gonna, do you know what I'm saying? Right. So, so if they build around that, right, to resemble the home, we're talking probably just a little bit of space from that pole to the fences, that makes sense?
Correct, I could see that.
Right, so Heidi again with the board. I, I don't approve this. I suggest that we go back to the five feet setback where it's supposed to be.
Again, as part of this exception, there, the other two, other lots are encroaching more than the subject property. So it does meet the exception B criteria.
But again, but it's not approved, they're not legal.
Correct.
Correct. So we need to set a precedence and I, I think we need to, again, that's, for me, it's denied. I don't approve it.
Okay, well, we're gonna vote.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, again, we're going back to the original motion.
Yeah, I'd like to modify my, I'd like to modify it.
Okay.
That was an issue with me, too. I was just trying to be a little softer, just. But I'd like to modify it in that we not approve the side setback. And add the addition that the materials on the structure have to be in keeping with the home. And the slope, oops, the slope of the canopy would then have to be in alignment with the roof structure to keep it with the character of the home.
Okay. So that is your motion?
Yeah. Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Heidi, have addition with the board, I second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Sorry, aye.
Vote it, uh, for the motion.
Aye, Gloria Clark with the board, says aye.
What did Gloria say? I'm sorry. What did Gloria say?
Aye, she said aye.
Aye, okay, thank you Gloria. Okay. All opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Good afternoon, chaired members of the board. Blanca Perez with Planning and Inspections. Item number ten on the agenda is a request for special exception B, two or more non-conforming lots for the property located at forty-five oh nine General Maloney. This aerial map provides an overview of the subject property and its surrounding area. The property is owned R three A residential. The site plan shows the existing structures in magenta and the encroachments in red. The applicant is requesting to allow to legalize a porch and a canopy encroaching into the twenty-five-foot rear setback and two accessory structures that encroach into the five-foot side setback. This image shows the current condition of the property as viewed from General Maloney Circle. From the left side of the property, you can see the porch area that encroaches twelve feet into the rear setback for a total of two hundred and eight square feet. Conditionally, side panels shall be removed. Here's another angle of the porch and another structure which sits nine feet from the rear property line. On the right side, the canopy encroaches twenty feet into the rear setback for a total of a hundred and sixty square feet, leaving a five-foot setback. This is the first accessory structure that encroaches into the five-foot side setback. And this is the second accessory structure that also encroaches into the side setback with a total encroachment of seventy-two square feet between the two. This map shows nearby non-conforming lots that have similar encroachments that qualify for this request. At forty-four forty-five General Maloney Circle, a similar condition exists with the home encroaching into the rear setback following an unpermitted addition that connected the approved, the approved accessory structure to the main home. At forty-four fifty-seven General Maloney Circle, an addition encroaches into the rear setback. The accessory structure on the, on this property was originally approved, but a later unpermitted addition now connects it to the main dwelling, resulting in one continuous structure. At forty-five twelve General Maloney Circle, an accessory structure encroaches approximately seventy-five square feet into the side setback with no permit on record. And similarly, on forty-five twenty-eight General Maloney Circle. Notices were mailed to property owners within three hundred feet on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And the planning division has received one call of inquiry but no comments in support or opposition. And with that, staff recommends approval with conditions, and they are for the existing porch to remain open on three sides and for the above-ground pool to be removed or relocated from the five-foot easement. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Martha Guay, your board members, any questions for the staff?
I'm sorry, can you give us the total square footage of all additions in that piece of property?
Yes, so the total rear encroachment, it's, I have it here, I'm sorry. It's around three hundred and sixty-eight square feet and the total side encroachment is seventy-two square feet.
Fabian Noriega with the board, on that site plan right there, just to clarify, where it says canopy a hundred and sixty feet, right next to the pool, to the right, that's also the porch?
That's the actual canopy and it's the one covering that deck under it.
And you're also saying for the porch to remain open on, on three sides?
Yes, so as you can see, they have panels right there and, yeah, they would have to be removed in order to consider it a porch.
Any further questions?
Can, can you show us the recommendations again, please?
The what, sorry?
The recommendations again, please, just so I can.
Fabian Noriega with the board, again, what is the staff's recommendation regarding the other structures that are encroaching?
It would be approved, the ones on the side, you mean? Yeah, so there are other two non-conforming properties that would qualify for this request. So that's why they are a part of the, of the final recommendation to approve.
But those properties aren't legal.
So for the sides.
Except for the one that was legal but no longer is.
Yeah, so the first two, which were the rear, they were originally legal, but since they added and connected them, now it's one continuous structure, so now they're, they're not legal. But for the sides, there are no permits on record, but still for special exception B, any non-conforming lots will qualify even if they don't have a permit.
Okay. Is the applicant or representative here to answer any questions from the board, please come to the podium. State your name and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, my name is Roger Carrillo. As for the pool, the pool, it's, it's not permanently there, but it'd be hard to move it in reference to what you all are recommending. I'd have to drain it and I don't think, it's just there. It's not a simple pool that you can, it's not permanent, but it's a little cement blocks I've already ever seen. They're just temporary, but it, it's there. I won't be, it's gonna cost me. And then my grandkids wouldn't appreciate it.
Okay. Board members?
Excuse me, I did take down the canopy in the corner. I took it down.
Okay. Is there anyone here or on the phone that would like to speak regarding this item? If you are, please press star six to unmute yourself. There's no one, okay.
This is Gloria Clark with the board. I guess I just want, can, uh, planning go over their, the recommendations again, please?
So for staff recommendations, it would be approval with the following conditions. The existing porch shall remain open on three sides and the above-ground pool shall be removed from the five-foot easement.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
So Mr. Carrillo? So again, the staff is recommending that the pool needs to be removed and you're telling us that you cannot move it?
It can be moved, but it, it won't, I don't know how much, it'd be, it'd be, I don't know, it, it's impossible. I'd have to take it down.
Yeah, if I might, Luis Amor with Planning Inspection, so the issue with the pool is, is that it goes over the easement, the lead easement of the year? So that's one of the city requirements. Obviously, ZDA approval is based on the property complying with all the other requirements. So this is a condition that, that's, is needed in order to, if the board is gonna obviously require an approval or approve their request.
So Mr. Samora, you're saying that the pool does need to be removed?
Correct.
Correct, for those, for the board to approve.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Do I, do you want to entertain a motion?
Gloria Clark with the board, I entertain a motion to go with what the planning is proposing.
Do I hear a second?
That the above pool be removed due to encroaching on the easement and the sides, I believe, are okay, I mean, would be staying, is that what you said, Mr. Samora?
Yeah, so, so what I said is that obviously the pool needs to be moved out of the easement. The side encroaching, that's up to the board if you will approve that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So do I hear a second?
I guess my question, Gloria Clark with the board, I guess we have to vote and see we wanna do, what do we wanna do with the side encroachments?
Board members? Any comments?
Yeah, if I might, just to clarify. So the, the request is for, there's two, well, let me start, there's an encroachment into the rear for a portion of the, that we're calling it a porch with the condition that they remove the siding, so it's open on all three sides along with the, the decking that's there. And then I think he mentioned the other canopy, it has been removed. But the, that's part of the request, that's, that's one. The second request is for the side encroaching, encroachments, which are the two sheds. So there's two requests going through the exception B.
Heidi, have addition with the board, so this photo right here, I'm just concerned, I don't know if anyone agrees, but it's right up on the wall. And it, you know, when it rains, it'll rain over, I believe, maybe the neighbors, and it looks close to the other roof. I, I recommend that we have those sheds.
And just as a reminder, the applicant will require permits, and then during the permitting, obviously that can be checked. One of the options is obviously to put gutters to make sure that water is retained within the property. So that's also a solution to that. But it's up to the board to obviously decide. You can request modifications or, or approve as it's, it's up to you.
Gloria Clark with the board, I, I make a motion to go with a planning recommendation that the above pool. that the above pool will be removed from the utility easement. Number two, I believe that, like you said, we could, according to the planning, that the site's sheds should be removed according to what the planning proposes, as long as they provide their conditions and they approve whatever they need to do. And number three, I believe you said the site two sheds. Again, is that what you're talking about, utility easements? So my motion is basically to go with what is recommended by city planning.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second? No?
I would ask that we amend it to include the gutters on the two side structures, so that the water is retained within the property.
Vanessa Rangel, for the record, that is something that we do review at time of permitting. So when they go into city for permits, we are gonna take a look at how the proximity is to the property line. We will ask for watershed to be retained within the property, so we would ask for gutters at that time.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Christine Leavitt, can I second Gloria's motion to just approve with the staff recommendations? Or does that count as a first?
That can be a second.
Thank you. All those who favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you. Thank you. So that was number...
Thank you everybody.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the board. Jose Beltrán with planning and inspections. Item eleven on the agenda is a request for special exception C, rear yard setback, single-family residence for the subject property located at eleven seven-six-five Angelica Court. The request is to permit the encroachment of an existing garage addition into the rear yard setback. Here we can see the property shown on the aerial image. It is located east of George Dieter Drive and south of Pelicano. Zone ownership of the property is R-three-A residential. Here is a site plan that shows the existing layout of the property. The applicant is requesting an exception C to allow for the modification of the required thirty-feet rear yard setback to allow to legalize the construction of an existing garage addition that will encroach nineteen-point-seventy-six feet into the required rear yard setback for a total encroachment area of four-hundred-and-seventy-four-point-two-four square feet, which is highlighted in red. Here's a front view of the subject property, taken from Angelica Court. Here's a view of the structure in question, the garage addition. Here we have a view of the rear of the yard, where we can see the encroachment area. And just to note, there will be a ten-foot rear yard setback maintained as required by exception C. Here's a side angle showing the encroachment of the garage addition. This also shows that there are no encroachments of the side yard setback, also as a requirement of exception C. The planning division has not received any communication, support, or opposition. Public notice was sent to property owners within three hundred feet on October thirty-first of the present year. To conclude, staff recommends approval of the exception request, as it meets all requirements.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions for the staff? Now, is the representative or owner here to speak in behalf of this item? Please step up to the podium and state your name.
Good afternoon. My name's Eduardo Ochoa. I'm the owner of the property.
Mr. Ochoa, thank you for being here. Board members, do you have any questions? No? Is there anyone from the public here or on the phone that would like to speak regarding this item? If you are on the phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. No? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve pro-staff's requirements.
Gloria Clark, I second the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. It's approved. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to item number twelve.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the board. Blanca Perez with planning and inspections. Item number twelve on the agenda is a request for special exception B, two or more non-conforming lots for the property located at sixty-two-twenty Cleveland. This aerial map provides an overview of the subject property and its surrounding area. The property is owned R-five residential. The site plan illustrates the layout of the property, showing the existing structures in magenta and the encroachments in red. The applicant is requesting a special exception to allow to legalize two existing carports and one accessory structure that encroach into the required twenty-five-foot rear yard setback and the five-foot side yard setback. This image shows the current condition of the property as viewed from Cleveland Avenue. This is a carport which encroaches two-hundred-and-sixty-six-point-sixty-five square feet into this five-foot side setback. And here is a proposed carport encroaching one-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-five square feet into the five-side setback. The accessory structure encroaches seventeen-point-eighty-six square feet into the five-foot side setback. And here we see the rear encroachment totaling one-hundred-and-seventy-two-point-seventy-five square feet, leaving a seven-foot rear setback. This map shows nearby non-conforming lots that have similar rear and side setback encroachments that qualify for this request. At sixty-two-sixty-four Cleveland Avenue, an addition encroaches into the side yard setback and into the rear yard setback with no permits on record for these encroachments. And similarly, at sixty-two-thirty-one East Yendel Drive, they have rear setback encroachments and side setback encroachments, also without any permits on record. Notices were mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the subject property on October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and the planning division has received no communication and support or opposition to the request. And staff recommends approval with a condition for the existing and proposed carports to remain open on three sides. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Board members, any questions to the staff?
Heidi, you have petition with the board. So the recommendation doesn't include moving in the carport to... Because it's more than five feet in?
So that is part of the special exception. Special exception B would be for two or more non-conforming lots, which there are more than two, but we only are required to get two. So these two properties encroach five feet into the side setback.
Sidi going with the board. Are the other properties, like, are they legalized?
They're not. They don't have permits, as per records.
Gloria Clark with the board. This is for the lady who proposed. Can you tell me on the sides, is that a ten-foot easement? And again, you're encroaching five foot into it, so my understanding that you still be at least five feet existing?
Can you repeat the question? Is it on the accessory structure?
Of the home, right? Are those ten-foot easements on each side, or is it just a five-foot easement that will go all the way to the rock wall?
It would be the five-foot setback.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you?
The five-foot setback? There are no easements.
So on the... Let me rephrase that. On the plan, is that a ten-foot easement on each side of the home, where they have the canopies or the...
No, it would be... It would be a five-foot setback.
Is that on the back or on the sides?
On the sides, there are no easements on the property itself, but they are requesting a special exception B for the side encroachment in the rear as well.
Okay, so you mean there's no... I see now there is an alley in the back, correct? Because I saw the wires. The electrical wires are in the back, correct? So is that why there's no electrical? How about gas?
Yeah, if I might, Lisa Mora with planning inspections. So given the alley, probably all utilities run through the alley instead of within the property. So that's very typical when we have alleys on the back of properties, is that all utilities run through it. And so there's no need for easements within the property.
All right, just clarifying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here that would like to speak regarding this item or on the phone that would like to address any questions? Or the representative is here. Thank you. Please step up to the podium and state your name, please. You have three minutes to speak.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Gloria Lara.
Good afternoon. My name is Gloria Lara.
Estamos aquí solicitando una aprobación de ustedes para poder terminar un tejabán de lámina que está allí. Este empezado y que no pudimos terminarlo. La razón que nosotros tenemos este sombreado del patio, bueno, el porche. Es porque tengo una condición de diabetes.
So she's here to ask for an exception for her to be able to finish the carport that is located in the rear.
Tengo una... Una condición en los ojos que me hace mucho daño el sol. El doctor me dijo que tengo que evitar mucho el sol. Y para estar en mi patio tengo que poner una sombra para estar haciendo trabajos afuera o actividades.
So she has a condition that doesn't allow her to be exposed too much in the sun. So for her, in order to do activities on her backyard, she would be required to have some sort of shading structure.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jorge Lara. Venimos aquí para pedir esa petición de que si nos pudieran ayudar a como lo que estamos haciendo.
Good afternoon. My name is Jorge Lara, and I'm here to see if I could request an exception in order for us to finish the carport.
Hay una lámina que divide... Como la casa de nosotros está de nivel, está bajo. Entonces el vecino ahí pues nosotros le pusimos una lámina para que... Porque ellos van caminando ahí por su casa lote y se ve todo para adentro. Tenemos la puerta de la cocina y mi esposa y yo estamos...
Estamos solos y la casa está abajo del nivel de la calle.
So... So they're explaining that their home, it's a little bit under level than the neighbors'. So the neighbor, it's being able to look into their property. So that's why they have that siding on the carports.
El vecino, verdad, no hablo mal de él ni nada, pero él vive solo y va mucha gente este extraña ahí a la casa y movimientos raros que estamos nosotros solos ahí. Tenemos pues miedo, verdad, porque llega gente muy extraña. Y el señor vive solo y incluso tenemos unas fotos donde él quitó el número de su casa y puso una cortina enfrente para que no vean sus actividades que hace en la noche. Y nosotros estamos solos y por eso pusimos esa lámina así para que no se vea ya para acá. Y queremos extender ese porche como dice mi señora.
So he's talking about a neighbor that... What, do you want to see the pictures of the...
Do you wanna see the pictures, board members? You wanna see them? Okay, please.
Yeah, Gloria Franco with the board, yes, please.
Gloria, hold on, please. Go ahead. Pase, por favor. Pase para ver los retratos.
If I might, Lisa Mora with the planning inspection, I'll just remind the board, obviously, what's on your authority right now on the table is a request for the exception. This is not for our avenue to obviously discuss other issues with neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Heidi with the board, I have a question for the staff. So the recommendation is that the... Was it the carport or porch to be open on all three sides? I'm a little confused.
Yes, so as you can see on this one, they have like a small portion at the top right of the carport that is kind of covered with the rock wall. And also, here, their main intent was to cover also the side. But that's one of the recommendations, just to keep everything open on three sides.
So keep open also what's existing, so they would have to take off that panel?
Not necessarily. Well, which panel? The one on the...
Yes, the one closer.
Oh, yes, that would be... That's part of the panel.
If I might, again, Lisa Mora. So another requirements for porches, carports, is that they need to be open on three sides. So only one side can be obviously covered, which typically is the house. So that's one of the requirements by the city code. So that's why this recommendation, this condition, to remove the covering on the side, because it needs to comply with that requirement to be open on three sides.
Okay, thank you. Martha Guay, thank you. Thank you. Any other... Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the board? Is there a... I mean, is there someone from the public that would like to address this item? Maybe you are here or on the phone. Please press star six to unmute yourselves. There's no one? Okay. Board members?
Jesús Quintanilla with the city attorney's office. Were they done testifying? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I entertain a motion? Board members?
Sidi going with the board. So just for me to understand, then, what would happen with the rest of the properties that are also not complying with this?
Vanessa with planning and inspections. Typically, staff will send that to enforcement so that we can start the case, so we can get those in process for legalization.
Thank you.
If I might, so the request right now is to address the issue, the encroachment on the side. Again, one of the conditions is to remove, obviously, what's covering to the neighbor. But that's a request to allow that to continue to stay as it is. And then, because they're connecting all this proposal to the accessory structure, the shed on the back, that's creating an issue with that one too. And that's the other request, is to address that one as well, so they can go ahead and submit permits and then get everything legalized.
Okay, thank you. Board members? May I entertain a motion?
Gloria Clark with the board. I make a motion to approve the city planning's proposal to have it open on all three sides and let them legalize it step by step as Mr. Samora has requested as we go forward in the future.
I second. Elizabeth Thurman-Bingston, I second the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. It passes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. The last item? The last item, number... Oh, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the board. Alejandra Gonzalez with planning and inspections. Item number thirteen on the agenda is a request for a special exception... Item number 13 on the agenda is a request for a special, a special exception B to or more non-conforming lots for the property located at 937 Rim. Here we can see the property, which is currently vacant, highlighted in yellow. The subject property is located east of Interstate Highway 10. The property is sewn R3 NCO, residential neighborhood conservancy overlay. Here's the site plan that shows the proposed layout of the property with the area of encroachment highlighted in red. The area of the encroachment will be a garage that will extend 13 feet into the 20-foot rear yard setback. The applicant is requesting a special exception B to permit the construction of the attached garage that will extend a total of 33, no, 330 square feet. It's a subject property looking up from Rim, Rim Road. And that was the proximate location of the proposed garage on the rear yard setback. Aerials indicate that there are three other properties on the same block and street that also contain structures located in their rear yard setbacks that encroach more than the proposed garage. We have 925 Rim Road encroaching 759 square feet, which, and this property does not have any issued permits on record. We have 925 Rim Road with, this one has an issued building permit. And 901 Rim Road with 469 square feet encroachment. And it doesn't have any issued permit. Public notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet on October 29th, 2025. And the planning division has not received any communication and support or opposition to the request. With that, staff recommends approval of the special request. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you ma'am, thank you, board members, any questions for the staff?
Fabian, what do you have with the board? I'm just curious, the garage in the back, is there vehicle access? Well, this is for staff also, or what do you define a garage as if there is no vehicle access?
Yes, there's an, you can see in this image, there's an alley. And there would be the entrance to the garage on the back.
Thank you.
Okay. Is the applicant or the representative here? Yes ma'am, come to the podium and state your name, please.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board, my name is Martina Lorai with Martina Lorai Architects. I represent the owners in this project. We are, do you have any questions for me? Cause I'll just go on about the project forever.
Board members, any questions for Ms. Lorai?
No.
Yes, I guess, do you have any pictures, or do you have anything that you can show us? Like what you're planning to make this look like?
Oh, well, it was not part of this application, but I can share with you that the present owners applied for a demolition permit and unknown to them, they should have registered the existing garage that was at the rear property setback line, accessible from the alley. And it is in their intention going forward to continue with having a garage structure accessible from the rear alley. The house itself, of course, is new. We have gone to a lot of trouble to respect the NCO requirements of this neighborhood, which is to respect the building setback lines. If you look at the aerial of the, of the street, you'll see that the adjacent properties are setback a certain point. And we did the same from Rim Road, which pushed our structure a little further back into the rear property setback line. So we're at 37 feet front yard property setback, and that pushed us further into our rear yard setback. We wish we would have filed that existing condition, so we would have had an exemption and wouldn't have had to take your time today. But we didn't. The house in the NCO, just to share with you, the maximum height is 35 feet. Our owners are only building 26 feet above finished grade. So they're very respectful of the scale of Rim Road, and they want to maintain that character.
Okay, any further questions? No, is there someone here or on the phone that would like to speak regarding this item? Unmute, press star six to unmute yourself. There's no one, no? Okay, do I, may I entertain a motion, please?
Elizabeth Thurman Binksen with the board, I move that we approve this item per staff's recommendations.
Thank you.
I, Heidi, have a petition, second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? It's been approved, thank you, Ms. Lorai.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, bye-bye. Okay. After all the items have been presented, any questions? No, may I hear a motion to adjourn?
We have minutes, but?
Oh, the minutes. Any, any, any comments, no?
Just one more item, number 14 for the minutes for September.
Okay.
September 8th.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Christine Lovridge, I move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Go ahead. Sidi going second.
Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, do I hear a motion to approve, I mean, to adjourn?
Fabian, what do you have, make a motion to adjourn?
Heidi, have a petition with the board, I second.
Do I hear a motion, I mean, I'm sorry, meeting's adjourned, I gotta go.